Please rise, group.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have just a moment of silence for the tragedy that happened this weekend in El Paso and in Ohio. Have a moment of silence for the family and the victims and just everyone. This is just getting so ridiculous. Yeah, so, thank you. Thank you. It's right. It's true. Roll call, please.
Bunton.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Crab.
Here.
Mensah.
Here.
I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Campbell.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call.
Bunton.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Does anyone have any? Okay. Adoption of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Public participation. This is the time you may address this body. All we ask is your name, address, and you adhere to the three-minute rule. Open mic.
Gloria Howard, 260 pass. Just two things. Number one, people have been mentioning you lately. They find you've been consulting with their person, whoever it is that gives them financial advice, and it's finally coming through to them that it would be a lot cheaper to have a city income tax for low-income and fixed-income people than it is to have the roof tax because an income tax is based on income, and if you're lower fixed, you're not going to pay any tax, whereas a roof tax is based on the value of your home regardless of your income. So, if you put it to a vote, it'd go this time. Just thought I'd mention it because people are... Why don't we have a city income tax, okay? The next thing is, I see Ms. Borges and Mr. Wood are still in place. Has there been any movement towards getting a handle on that? Because I'll review the cost for you again. Removing their base wages from the calculation, they get wages plus the bump up that Mr. Murray gave them recently because they were doing such a good job, plus their two sidekicks get a little bump up in wage. They both get a car allowance around $3,000 a year. They both get a phone. Legal fees have gone up during their time. If you add that all up, you're going to find out that costs a whole lot more than hiring a qualified city manager. And I've talked to the MML, some other sources, and there are people out there. Even though, you know, people looking for jobs, you figure they're not too good, but at least if they're qualified. And I don't want you ever to forget, you had a finance manager, Kuna, she had a master's in business administration. She is the one, if you were going to appoint a city employee to be interim city manager, it should have been her. And I gotta kind of wonder why that wasn't done.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. I just need to ask a question concerning the relocation of the voting polls. Is that the same way we did it the last time, from Karnes to the city or else from the church on my side of town? Turner Chapel to here or, you know?
It's on the agenda. She'll read it.
Yeah, but I was just wondering, any particular reason why we're moving it into the city? Is it a cost factor or is it because you're not...
It's in the explanation here. As soon as...
It's 9A.
It's... Which one?
It's 9A.
It's 9A. Yes, the cost is one of them.
But it doesn't give any specific reason.
Yeah, it will.
Okay.
If not, then you can... We'll get the answers true, yeah. Anyone else?
John Van Camp, 50 North Wallman Street. I would like to know, seeing as I'm an environmentalist and I'm looking at our environment really close now, I'm wondering what has happened or if anything at all has happened as far as the high waters of Lake St. Clair and the effect that it would have on the river and also our wastewater, what it's doing with that. I don't know if... That was not the last meeting or the one before that, so I don't know if anything has been brought up already. Not? That's what I would like to find out.
Okay. We'll get that information.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Excuse me for a second. Mike Zubis, 221 Cassel. I was going to talk about the recent approval by the state of the recreational cannabis laws that are coming into effect this November, and I found them to be pretty interesting. They're going to allow new types of facilities such as the... It's comparable to a cannabis club. I cannot figure out the terminology the state uses, but what it is is, you... There are two options where you could have people come into a facility similar to a bar, but you can have some sell the product and some not sell the product, where they have to bring it in, you know, BYOB style. Some states such as Tennessee have that for their bars, so that would be interesting to see. And the other part was the festival part. I found it to be very intriguing. So, we could have like a one-day or two-day festival where vendors can come out and bring their wares. But the only downside is that we don't really have a lot of space. It'll be kind of hard to keep it away from neighborhoods when most of Mount Clemens is a neighborhood, unfortunately. But it's something to look into, and November 1st is the date that they come into effect. So, we have about a couple of months to really review all this and try to really get it down pat, hopefully before the elections, because I predict that there are some communities that will have this stuff ready to go by Christmas, New Year's Eve. So, hopefully we'll have a big celebration like California did where they counted down and the guy ended up... But anyways, I really wanted to get into the recent Reefer Madness issues that some of the state... No, not state. The county school boards have had where they've seen the... Because Clinton Township recently turned down their ordinance, and they celebrated that as if like it's going to help the schools and whatnot. But I really feel like this whole issue has not been about young kids. I mean, it has been somewhat to a degree, but I feel like when it first started back in 1936, when I say Reefer Madness, there was a movie made, Reefer Madness. That's where I get the terminology from, where I kind of teed into like people thinking that the reasons why we keep it legal now are justified, but I don't think they are. I think that a lot of it has come down to the hidden racial disparities that were created before the 1950s that we never really experienced in our generation. And to give it all down pat, there was official... This is the official terminology that the Harry G. Anslinger, then District Attorney of New York, became District Attorney of America, said there are a total of... Let me try to say this in 1930 voice. "There are 100,000 total marijuana smokers in the U.S. Most are Negroes, Hispanics, Filipinos, and entertainers. Their satanic music, jazz, and swing result from the marijuana usage. This marijuana causes white women to seek relations with the Negroes, entertainers, and any others." So, the original reason why we got the War on Drugs was to keep race mixing from happening, which at the time was an acceptable idea. But now, I think it's really evolved since then because it's been a 80-year thing. We've really... It wasn't really much of a war until the '70s, so...
Sorry.
I just wanted to give out that truth.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Definitely.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Approval of the minutes from previous meetings? I need a motion.
Move to approve the minutes from the July 15th City Commission Work Session and the July 15th, 2019 regular commission meeting.
Support.
Okay. General Business, 9A, approved... Approve of temporary relocation and consolidation of the...
We need a roll call.
What?
We need a roll call.
Oh, roll call. Sorry. Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes. I heard an echo of two. Okay. 9A, approval of a temporary relocation and consolidation of a voting precinct. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the temporary relocation of voting precinct number five, Karnes or Jermaine Jackson Community Center, to vote at City Hall, One Crocker Boulevard, and consolidation of voting precinct number five and number six at City Hall for the November 5th, 2019 election.
Right.
Ford.
The City Clerk's Office is requesting approval to temporarily relocate voting precinct number five, currently located at Karnes, Jermaine Jackson Community Center, 58 Orchard, to vote at City Hall, One Crocker Boulevard. This precinct would be consolidated with voting precinct number six at City Hall to form one precinct. Since so many of the registered voters at precinct number five already vote by absentee ballot, the turnout at Karnes Community Center is extremely low. Consolidating precincts helps reduce the election administration costs. This precinct was temporarily relocated for the elections held in 2018, and the Clerk's Office received no complaints or issues. Michigan election law states that a voting precinct cannot be moved less than 60 days prior to an election. The Election Commission approved the relocation and consolidation at their meeting of July 31st, 2019. All voters affected by this temporary precinct move will be notified through a mailing in September. Notices will be posted on the city's Facebook page and website, the Journal Newspaper, and signs will be posted at the entrance of Karnes Community Center to direct voters to go to City Hall to vote. With the approval of Proposal Three, all voters are now able to vote by absentee ballot with no reason. Also, all voters have the option to use the city's dial-and-ride service to and from voting precincts and no charge on election.
Okay. Any questions, Karnes?
Ms. Fournier.
Did we have any... A lower number of people voting in total if you count up the absentee? Because we've had it at City Hall for the last two elections, I believe.
It was the last three elections last year. So, it was just last year, but there were three elections.
Did you see any reduction in the numbers of voters?
We actually received a higher number of voters here.
Okay. One other question. We've... So, you've done it for three times now, and now this will be four. Why don't we just make it permanent?
That is a consideration.
Okay.
What I'd like to do, it would save costs and equipment and precinct rental for the opening and closing the precinct, the number of workers that we have to have to operate the precinct, ballot printing, everything would save costs.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Mo, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion to approve purchase and payments of invoices.
Motion to approve purchase and payments of invoices as presented.
Support.
Oh, is that with the button? Commissioner Button.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Mensah.
No, I just wanted to congratulate Lenny Bertrand for looking at this new mobile device. This is going to save a lot of time. I think it's going to be a lot, you know, more accurate, and I just wanted to give him a shout-out for his research and into looking into this, so that's it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Crab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crab.
Yes.
Do the city managers report?
Please join us for not one but two Uptown Concerts on Friday and Saturday nights in August. The concerts sponsored by Mount Clemens Downtown Development Authority, Vastity Bistro, Madison Pub, Artist Music, and O'Halloran Public House will begin at 7:00 P.M. by the Fountain Stage. The 139th Annual Old Crowd Parade will take place on Thursday, August 15th, 2019 at 9:00 A.M. The old crowd will gather on Main Street and Lacon Place before the parade begins. Rolling street closures in the downtown will take place while the parade is en route, and the city has been asking residents to submit photographs to be used on the website, and the residents are responding. The city website currently features photographs from Mitch and Lori Furtig, Kyle Murphy, and Myra Portia. We would like to thank them for their submissions and ask all Mount Clemens residents to please continue to send us photographs of our beautiful city to share with everyone. The photo gallery will be updated soon.
Any questions? The city managers report. All right, we'll have commissioners report. Commissioner Mensah.
All right, I have a few things here. I participated in our second Neighbors Helping Neighbors Community Cleanup. I got poison ivy from it, but I wanted to give a shout-out to Coach Munchy Valley... Musky Valley and the kids from the Mount Clemens High Basketball Team and Football Team who came and the Junior Optimists Club at the high school that came to help. Those kids did a lot of work. They did a great job. They were cheerful about it even though it was like, you know, 92 degrees. It was really great to see. And as part of that, I am urging everyone to show them support by going to the homecoming game, October 11th at 7:00 P.M. here in our, you know, at our stadium. They'll be playing Harper Woods Chandler Park Academy. So, I am urging everybody to show your, you know, community support for these, you know, these students and show up at the football game. I wanted to give a shout-out to Shelby Alager, who just graduated as a certified nursing assistant from the Michigan Career and Technical Institute. Congratulations, she's on her way to a great nursing career. I wanted to tell you that the Mount Clemens Public Library is having a feature on preventing identity theft next Thursday, August 15th, from 7:00 to 8:00. I got hit with identity theft a couple of years ago. Somebody had a really good time with my credit card at a casino in Ohio. They bought themselves presents, and they bought themselves a room, and they got their haircut and did all kinds of wonderful things with my credit card numbers. So, now that Capital One has announced that they've had a breach and we're looking at the Equifax settlement, it would be a good time for you to listen to a representative from the Michigan Attorney General's office. They're going to talk to you about the signs of identity theft, how to prevent your personal info from being stolen, and what to do about it if you are a victim. So, I think it's very timely when in the last few days, all we've been hearing about is the Capital One breach. I wanted to remind you that next Sunday, Miller Brothers Customer Appreciation Picnic is going on from 1:00 to 5:00. There'll be a raffle for a special Coca-Cola bicycle. Roscoe will be there. There will be other entertainment, and as you know, he's got some great ice cream. He's going to be putting hot dogs and hamburgers, you know, on the grill, so step out and show some love to our long-term Miller Brothers. I'll remind you too that the Art Party's coming up, September 26th. It's a Thursday from 6:00 to 9:00. The tickets are now available at the Art Center. And finally, the Mount Clemens Optimists Club is putting... Starting to put together Trunk or Treat. One of our big major sponsors is right back there, Mr. Vito Strolus. So, we are looking for new sponsors. We are looking for people to fill the trunks, and we're looking for people who maybe want to do, you know, magic tricks and entertain the kids as they wait in line, because if you bend a trunk or treat, you know, we service about 1,500 kids that day. So, anybody who is interested, see me, see an optimist, see Vito, you know, just let us know. We'd be more than happy, and we challenge every other service club to come join us. Thank you.
What day is it?
That is the last Saturday of October.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
26.
Thank you, 26.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
I have two things. Number one, I'd like to thank the head of the supervisor, the DPW, for a fine job he did with Avery Street. The neighbors were complaining, he took care of the complaint. Number two is, we need more sheriff deputies riding around the city. I'm getting a little tired of people coming up to me. One of the neighbors even showed me the dope house. Something has to be done. Thank you.
Did you report it?
They've been reporting them.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
Now, the Commissioner Mensah has clearly reminded us that fall is really close. We have about one more month left of summer, and I hope everyone enjoys this month and stays safe and... But has a lot of fun and hope your air conditioner makes it through the rest of the summer. Mine did not, and so I want to give a shout-out to Airworks, a local Mount Clemens business who was there right away and fixed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Button.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to just mention in our report, in our previous recommendation, Shady Side Park, the New Generation Ministry, will be hosting a community activity there on August 30th. That would be from 12:00 noon to 8:00 P.M. So, for those of you who are able to make it, it's open to the public and you can enjoy yourselves. Things to celebrate. Month-long celebrations, you have National Eye Exam Month, and I put that in because your eyes are a very important part of your livelihood, and if you don't take good care of your eyes, you can suffer greatly, and especially as we mature and get a little older, eyesight is a very important part of our life. Also, Dog Days of Summer continues until August 11th, so that's a thing we can either celebrate or remiss over. But anyway, National Picnic Month is also a month of August. So, special days to celebrate. As always, I believe we ought to celebrate more and more. If you can't think of anything to celebrate, then I have a few things that might interest you. August 11th is Son and Daughter Day, a day to spend with your children. After all, your son and/or daughters should be the joy of your life. Treat them as the jewels that they really are, and you won't regret it. August 12th, Middle Child Day. Give a little well-deserved recognition to the wonderful and special middle children of the family. They are not the very special firstborn of the family, and they're not the very special baby of the family. This day is set aside to let middle children know that they are very special in spite of their numerical position in the family, and I'm one of those middle children. August 15th, National Relaxation Day. Even though it falls on a Thursday, schedule some part of the day to do nothing or something totally relaxing. Treat yourself to some relaxing activities or just time to do absolutely nothing. You will be surprised at how it will improve your outlook on life. I have a couple of commissioner wisdoms for you. A bank is a place that you will... That will lend you money if you can prove that you don't really need it. Think about that. And another one for you. The hottest place in hell is reserved for those who remain silent in times of great moral conflict. But I also have an editorial for you. First of all, my prayers and simply go out to all the victims of the mass shootings this weekend. The senseless shooting in Dayton, Ohio, and El Paso, Texas, this weekend shows just how divided our country has become. We are fighting among ourselves with such veracity that those countries that want to topple our government just have to wait and watch as we destroy ourselves from within. That is the way to take over any strong government, from within. If they can create enough dissension, division, and chaos within our democracy, we will destroy ourselves. Our political parties fight and destroy each other rather than protect and provide comfort and prosperity for each of our citizens. Our morality is degenerating to the point that taking life is justified by personal beliefs, radical causes, and total greed. As citizens of moral conscience, we, the American people, must stand up and oppose the radical division between races and ethnic backgrounds, between economic status, age, political parties, or any other superficial barriers. We are Americans first, and our government should be of the people, by the people, for the people. The violence that we are increasingly witnessing is as much an attack on our country as the Timothy McVeil bombing of the federal building in Oklahoma or the 9/11 terrorist attack in New York. Wake up, America, because before it becomes too late. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Ms. Crab.
If you are in need of a lunch or food, the Jermaine Jackson Center, the Jermaine Jackson Community Center is open Monday through Friday, and they are serving lunches to all ages, though it's not just for the children type of program. So, if you are in need or know somebody in need, please feel free to go there. I believe they start at 11:30 and go till 1:00. I have been doing a lot of walking in our neighborhoods and have noticed quite a few, including in my own neighborhood, people speeding through neighborhood areas. And a lot of our streets are wider because they're older streets and they're wider boulevards. And that does not give anybody permission to fly down the street, and I've seen so many kids outside riding their bikes and playing, and you just would hate to see some sort of tragedy. So, I know that the city has been putting out the radar, and I hope that we can continue to do that, and I agree with Commissioner Ford that, of course, it would be great if we could have increased patrols, especially within our neighborhoods, because it would just be such a horrific accident if somebody plows somebody down. I also keep... I know I keep beating a dead horse, but every summer, the roadways again have the weeds when you're driving up northbound Grashit or down southbound Grashit between where there's the curb and then the first, yeah, the first cement squares. There's always a line of weeds all the way down it, and it seems like as soon as you hit Mount Clemens, that's where the weeds start. And so, I don't understand why we have the weeds and other people don't seem to. So, I know we have a very small DPW crew, and I understand that, but I believe that we can't complain to residents if we don't take care of things. And I also know that the post office is one of the number-one offenders of the amount of weeds that they have growing through their fences, through their easements, through their... It's terrible. And so, and I also know that in other cities, it does not look like that. And so, I keep trying to talk to the people at the post office, and they don't seem to really mind, so I think we need to get a little bit stronger with them as a city. The Worship Center, on a more happy note, the Worship Center is holding an event at Shady Side Park, and I just... Oh, and it's... I forgot to write it down. August 17th, right? This Saturday, but next Saturday. So, yeah, August 17th from 11:00 to 3:00, and it's going to be their first annual Family Fun Fest and School Outreach Event, and it's going to be a barbecue, and they're going and it's going to be a barbecue, and they're going to have free school supplies. If you have any backpacks that you could donate, along with some school supplies to put in them, they are still collecting backpacks at their church, which is located on Main Street. Saturday, August seventeenth. And I'd also like to congratulate Pops Sweets and Treats, the daughter of Mike, the owner, tweeted that it was making her dad sad that not enough people were coming out to support their business in Mount Clemens, and the tweet went viral. And they have just been inundated with customers, and it's really exciting to see a full store, and those people have then gone to other businesses within downtown, so that's really an exciting thing for Pops, but also for Mount Clemens, and so I thought we should celebrate that. And that's all I have.
Well, let's see, you said summer's almost over with? I think it goes to September twenty-second, I hope that's right on the calendar. So I just want to wish everybody safe, and have fun this summer, you have a month and a half of summer, and hopefully we'll have a great fall, so take care and enjoy the rest of the season. And I, with that, I need a motion to adjourn. Support? All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Need a adjourn.